I'd like to call a meeting to order, please. Supervisor Wells, would you leave us an invocation, please, sir?
Yes, sir. Could we stand, please?
Sure.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, we ask your blessings on this group as we gather to discuss issues about our community and our counties, our state and our nation. We ask for your blessings for us as leaders in the community and all of our community citizens, our police officers, our firemen, those who are serving overseas, and those who serve locally in our armed forces. Please guide and direct us and hold our hand and lead us in the right direction. And we ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Pastor Lofton, you leave us in the pledge, please, sir.
A spight for our blessed. I plead to thee to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, ungod, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. All right. Adoption of the agenda. Are there any proposed changes?
Mr. Chairman, I would want to point out that the Carmousse Company has requested a postponement of their rezoning. Not sure how the board would want to handle that.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I believe we had most of the issues worked out with Carmousse, but there has been one important issue that has surfaced that I think really does deserve some more time and attention, and so I would move that we amend the agenda to remove the proffer amendment vote for Carmousse this evening.
Heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Is there a date at which we will take this up? I know the statute requires us to act or may require us to act within a certain amount of time. Is there a time that we could amend this motion that we would act at some time in the near future?
The fact that it's at the applicant's request sort of stops the clock on that time limit.
Did you have a preference?
Do we have a specific date?
Next meeting?
I'm sorry?
Next meeting?
Yeah, July 25th.
Does that work?
Is that an amendment to the motion?
Do you want to amend that with my second? The day be set for the 25th for them to request the...
To be reheard.
To be reheard.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Thank you, Chairman.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The agenda is adopted as amended. Now bring us to the consent agenda. Are there any proposed changes?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
How would the board like to handle the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Motion to approve as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Citizen comments, agenda items that are not subject to a public hearing. I think we had one person?
Yes, sir. We had Robin Young.
Ms. Young, were your remarks addressed to the Carmousse discussion?
Sort of, but it's pulled from...
You're welcome to speak regardless.
Thank you. It's pulled from the agenda, so I think that lets me speak right now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Robin Young, Back Creek District. I'm really all in favor of any discussions you might be having about preventing the sale of our water to Nestle so they can sell Frederick County water to Texas. So go for it. It should stay here. However, I do have a concern that the points that the neighbors achieved in the June 1st draft of the proffer are not forgotten. So with your permission, I'm going to hand Ms. Phillips a summary of those points that the neighbors feel they want in this latest proffer for your... for you to keep as a souvenir until July 25th. All right?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Very good. I will...
If you have copy for... Okay. Thank you.
Board of Supervisors comments. Are there any? Seeing none, we have a presentation quite exciting, a resolution honoring the Millbrook High School girls' basketball team. Coach, if you all would come forward. We appreciate it. It's a resolution honoring the 2018 VHSL Class IV State Champions, Millbrook High School Pioneers Girls Basketball Team. Whereas Millbrook High School opened its doors in 2003, and whereas during the ensuing 15 years, its athletic teams have quickly become some of the best in the district and the state. And whereas the Millbrook High School Girls Basketball Team achieved the pinnacle of greatness by completing an undefeated season with a record of 28-0 and winning the 2018 VHSL Class IV State Championship. And whereas Coach Eric Green, his staff, and the Millbrook High School Girls Basketball Team represented this community with distinction and honor throughout the state basketball tournament. And whereas this team achieved this honor through a combination of hard work, sweat, tears, and true sportsmanship, which has brought favorable recognition upon themselves, their school, and their community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Frederick County Board of Supervisors offers its congratulations to the coaches and players of the 2018 Millbrook High School Girls Basketball Team for a job well done. And be it therefore resolved that a true copy of this resolution be presented to the coaches and the team, and this was adopted the 25th day of April 2018. So please join me in congratulating and thanking these young folks.
It will be a parade downtown.
The Capitol.
Like the Capitol, that's right.
That's right.
Mr. Chairman, could you join us? Thank you. The red donkeys the camera. The Employee of the Month Award Program recognizes the county's employees as an important and valuable resource. On behalf of the Board of Supervisors, it's my pleasure to present Lisa M. Lambert as Employee of the Month for June 2018. Lisa M. Lambert serves as a Human Resources Specialist with Frederick County. Lisa's done a phenomenal job finalizing the implementation of the applicant tracking system portion of NeoGov for the county. Lisa worked diligently to learn the system and all its variables. Not only did she learn how to use the software, she trained others to use the software effectively. Lisa contacted in hiring managers to gain their support for posting positions in the NeoGov platform, and within about nine months, she took HR from the configuration stage to full implementation. Moving the county to the Neo platform was a huge step forward in his increase the applicant pool for hiring managers, providing great success for each position posted. It's also reduced the manual transactions associated with the paper system, making the hiring process more efficient. And finally, Lisa was personally recognized by the NeoGov Implementation Consultant for her hard work in implementing NeoGov. The Board of Supervisors extends its gratitude to Lisa for her outstanding performance and dedicated service and wishes her continued success in future endeavors. Please join me in congratulating and thanking Ms. Lambert for all her hard work. Committee of Pointments. Board of Zoning Appeals?
We have an application pending, Mr. Chairman. Hopefully, we will have that finalized for you at your next meeting.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Historic Resources Advisory Board, we have a member-at-large representative. Hasn't looked like we have an applicant yet?
We have a pending application, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Airport Authority, I would like to leave those and come back to those at a later meeting. We trust the Frederick County Tourism Board, it looks like we have two applicants for reappointment, and then two potential new applicants, which I believe we're waiting for input from the city on. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The city's asked that we postpone acting on the two new appointments.
Great. So we have two that are eligible for reappointment. How would the board like to handle those?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move for approval on that.
Move for approval of the two reappointments. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
And opposed, no. Then we'll reappoint those folks. Conservation Easement Authority?
Mr. Chairman's staff has reached out to the three individuals eligible for reappointment. Right now, Mr. Triplet has expressed the desire to be reappointed. We are waiting to hear from the other two folks.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. I think that brings us to the end of the list. Okay. Request from the Commissioner for Revenue Refunds.
Mr. Chairman, you have two refunds, one being to Allied Financial Vault in the amount of $7,038.39, the second being to GE Capital Auto Lease in the amount of $12,124.71. These are both the result of automobile... automobiles either being sold or moved out of the county, so it relates to the personal property tax on those vehicles. They've both been reviewed and okayed by the county attorney.
Thank you, sir. How would the board like to handle these?
Mr. Chairman, I would move for approval of the refund to Allied Financial in the amount of $7,038.39, and refund to GE Capital Auto Lease for $12,124.71, and the corresponding supplemental appropriation.
Thank you. Heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and motion carries. Both refunds are approved. Brings us to a resolution authorizing an extension performance agreement with Kingspan?
Mr. Chairman, I assume the board will recall that this was discussed in closed session. Kingspan's asked for an extension of their performance target due to the line that they were installing taking longer than they had anticipated. There's really no cost to the county. It just gives them an extension in order to meet that performance goal.
Heard the request. How would the board like to handle this one?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I would move to approve the request of Kingspan Insulation LLC Performance Agreement Extension as presented.
Heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Lofton?
If I may, it's been reported that Kingspan has met a good deal of their performance agreement, but it appears some of the capital investment has not quite met the terms of the performance agreement, although they do expect to have it, as stated in the request, by the end of the year. So I think that's reasonable to extend this request.
Further discussion? Anyone? Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
No.
Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries. All right. That will bring us to public hearings. Outdoor Festival Permit Request of Robert Boserman, Fab Jam Festival.
Mr. Chairman, this is a festival permit application for an event to be held Saturday, June 23rd, at the Frederick County Fairgrounds in rain date of Sunday, June 24th. The applicant is here to answer any questions that the board may have on the event.
Thank you, sir. Anything you'd like to add, Mr. Boserman?
No, sir. Good evening. How are you all doing this evening? Excellent.
Questions for Mr. Boserman? Anyone? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. How would the board like to handle this one?
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
I'm sorry. Thank you. You're on top of me tonight. I appreciate it. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to comment concerning this proposed festival permit? Anyone at all? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing portion. How would the board like to handle this one?
Mr. Chairman, I would move for approval for outdoor festival permit request of Robert Boserman for Fab Jam Festival on, let's see, June 23rd.
Heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Sorry, sir?
I just want to say thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir. All right. Any discussion? Anyone? All right. Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Aye, and the chair votes aye, and the motion carries. Thank you. All right. That'll bring us a request by Mountain Falls Park residents for designation of a sanitary district. Public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, the county received a petition from some residents at Mountain Falls Park to establish a sanitary district. The Code of Virginia puts the authority on the board as to whether or not to create a sanitary district. We have two in the county, as the board is well aware. There are very few requirements set out in the code for the creation of a district, the first being simply that if 50 registered voters within a proposed district petition the county, then the county is required to hold a public hearing. So after receipt of the signatures on a petition, the board in your April meeting scheduled a public hearing, met the public hearing requirements, which brings us to tonight. The only other real guidance offered by the code for the creation of a district is that the board should try to determine that, quote, "the district is necessary, practical, physically responsible, and supported by at least 50% of its residents." Shawnee, or I'm sorry, Mountain Falls Park has over 2,000 lots, over 1,000 individual property owners. We have in our GIS system 515 addressed structures within Mountain Falls Park. So one of the challenges the board will face is trying to ferret out whether or not 50% of those individuals support the notion of a sanitary district. So tonight, the purpose of the public hearing is really to hear from those folks, either pro or con, as to the nature of their desire for a sanitary district, and then it's really up to the board to decide where you want to go from there, and you have, you know, quite a variety of choices of where you might choose to go. If the board chooses to go no further, then that's the end of the matter. You could decide you want to create a sanitary district, and then there's some work we would have to do, setting out the bounds and so on for that. And another alternative that's been bandied about a bit is that you could task our Public Works Department with trying to figure out what the scope and nature of that sanitary district might be, as well as the cost to manage such an animal if it were created. So that's sort of the background leading up to tonight, and I'm happy to try and answer questions if you have them of me.
Questions of Mr. Tierney. Anyone?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Supervisor McCarthy?
Today, do we know how many communications we've gotten from homeowners within... my anecdotal count was around 53, 54.
Ms. Phillips would probably know better than I. She's been the recipient of those correspondence.
That number sounds right. You've received everything that I've received to date. You have copies.
All right. Thank you.
And we'll have to have a more formalized process to identify 50% at some point if we decide to continue to move forward. Any other questions? All right. So that it's clear, the public hearing that we're holding this evening is a required step before it can go any further, so we scheduled the public hearing. We'll be happy to hear comments from anyone who would like to comment on this subject, but we won't be voting to decide whether or not to form a district this evening, I don't believe. All right. We'll open the public hearing portion. If anyone would like to speak concerning the possible creation of the sanitary district? Anyone? Anyone at all? Yes, sir. So if we could just have your name and magisterial district, please, and try to limit your comments to three minutes or less, please, sir?
Yes, sir. My name is Troy Willoughby. I live in Mountain Falls. I believe, I don't know if it's in the Back Creek District. Thank you very much for hearing my comments. I've lived in Mountain Falls for 10 years. I don't know if all the members of the board are aware of the problems that have happened in those 10 years, or of our government setup that we have. We have a volunteer board of people that live there, some of which have been very hard to fill for any length of time due to the magnitude of the problems we've had. Over this period of time, we've had investigations and embezzlement, a lot of individual bantering back and forth, but very little that's being done. The individual board dues seem to disappear with almost no improvement. I, like a lot of people there, are also a property owner. We pay HOA taxes, or HOA amounts, on all the lots that we own, as well as our housing lots, and the roads have continually gotten worse. Now they're in such a state of disrepair that the current equipment they have up there is no way that it's ever going to be fixed. With the recent flooding, they have continually gotten worse. I think there's been PowerPoint presentations that have been forwarded to the board, but some of the pictures of the individual properties have been affected. So I do ask the board if they can in any way help. We certainly need the help. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Ethel Nichols, and...
Just pull the microphone down, if you would.
Okay.
Thank you.
My name is Ethel Nichols. I'm a resident of Mountain Falls Park, Back Creek District. I'd like to thank you for considering and hopefully voting yes eventually for our community becoming a sanitary district. There are over 500 homes in our development and 26 miles of roads with several common areas to maintain. Dues collection from owners/residents are the vehicle through which this is accomplished. With the dues collections being minimalistic, there have been insufficient operating capital to maintain or repair our roads, common areas, or real property. The monies that have been collected have been mismanaged by the elected and appointed Board of Governors through the purchasing of unnecessary inadequate equipment, employing of under-skilled workers, and the spending of exorbitant amounts on legal counsel. The paved roads done in the early '90s that were once in good condition are now falling apart and need major repairs or replacement. The recent rains have exacerbated their deterioration. Lack of stormwater management, the absence of ditches or culverts where needed, have caused flooding and damage to the majority of our dirt roads, as well as individual owners' properties. Since 2014, there have been pending legal issues regarding stormwater management with the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality. They have yet to be resolved. Property values have been stagnant due to the condition of the community, not providing residents who wish to sell and move a fair return on their investment, and sometimes not being able to sell their residence at all. The primary duty of the Wild Acres Property Owners Association is to collect dues, manage our monies responsibly, and ensure every member has paid and is receiving what they have paid for and are entitled to. Unfortunately, that has not been the case for the last couple of decades. With the Board of Governors' failure to meet their fiduciary duties, to comply with the Virginia Property Owners Association Act, and Wild Acres' operating documents, the community has suffered the consequences. Over the years, the Wild Acres Property Owners Association Board of Governors have consistently lacked the skills, expertise, or knowledge of how to manage a community of this size. It is because of this I am in support of Mountain Falls Park becoming a sanitary district, and Wild Acres Property Owners Association becoming inactive. As a tax-paying citizen of Frederick County, the Board of Supervisors owes the residents of Mountain Falls Park the same consideration all of the citizens of the county receives. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? You have to be more physical with it. It likes to resist. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and board members. My name is Beth Shalapp, and I'm a resident of the Mountain Falls Park subdivision in the Back Creek District. Wapoa is the POA for the Mountain Falls Park subdivision. Due to the last decade of prior Wapoa Board of Governors' mismanagement of our records, monies, upkeep of our common areas, it is my opinion that our POA is no longer viable, and we desperately need the county to establish a sanitary district for Mountain Falls Park. It's because of the ongoing continual endless failures of the POA to meet the most basic of expectations of the property owners that Ethel Nichols and I contacted Mr. Lofton to inquire as to the process of becoming a sanitary district. Mr. Lofton stated the law had changed last year and that he would need to contact the county attorney and the county administrator for guidance. After doing so, Mr. Lofton informed us that the law removed the power of the Circuit Court to create sanitary districts. Instead, under the current law, residents of the proposed district may bring a petition bearing the signatures of 50 qualified voters from Mountain Falls to the board for consideration. Once the board receives the petition, it is required to set a date for public hearing on the matter where residents of Mountain Falls Park would be permitted to come and speak in favor or against the petition. Mr. Lofton stated that his only change of the process would be to ask the Public Works Department to estimate the costs associated with improving and maintaining the current roadways, and present a proposed yearly fee for all maintenance activities deemed appropriate for the community, and disseminate that information to the affected property owners before a public hearing is set. It's important that this board knows that when we were obtaining the petition's signatures, we relayed this information to all interested parties exactly as Mr. Lofton stated to us. In fact, we handed out Mr. Lofton's email as a part of the information that was provided. I feel it's necessary to inform everyone present that at that time, Mr. Lofton provided the original information that was the most accurate and up-to-date he had. It's unfortunate that subsequently, after further review of the law and discussions with other officials, that the process was changed. What has not happened at this point is the matter has not been referred to the Public Works Department for a cost estimate. Respectfully, therefore, my request to you is that you continue the public hearing period for another 30 days. Please send this matter to the Public Works Department to perform an evaluation of our roads, common areas, and equipment, to obtain an actual cost analysis that can be provided to both the County Board of Supervisors and to all Mountain Falls Park residents before the next public hearing, and to delay the vote until that time. Our roads, common areas, and money are obviously not being currently properly managed. I personally sustained over $5,000 worth of water damage because of improperly managed stormwater. I also know that many other residents sustained property damage for the same reason. I hope this board remembers that we are also tax-paying county residents or deserving of your compassion and consideration. It is my opinion that a volunteer Board of Governors is not qualified or capable of handling the day-to-day management of a property owners' association of our size...
Go ahead and get to it.
...which has over 500 homes. Please try and put yourselves in our position and vote how you would want to be treated. But I know you're actually not going to vote tonight, but I did want to ask, do you know when you will vote?
We do not at this time, I don't believe.
Okay.
We'll certainly let everyone know.
Thank you for your time.
It won't be a surprise. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Well, I sort of was hoping that everything would have been covered before this, but it obviously has not. I'm Leonard Roman. I live in Mountain Falls. I've been living in there for two and a half years, and I got a disclosure package that was late when I bought the property, which showed that Mountain Falls, Wapoa, whatever you want to call it, was in very good shape, that they made a lot of money the prior year. They had a budget that looked realistic. All of that was just out the window, okay? In two and a half years, they basically don't have any accounting. They separated from the office manager around the first of the year, and they brought one of the board members in. Now, one of the previous people mentioned that the board is volunteer, so they work one day a month, basically. Some people come in a little bit, okay, and the board doesn't communicate. They're very dysfunctional. They're very dysfunctional. So in looking at some of it and discussing with Heather Gillespie over at the CIC or something like that about what can be done, because they are not following the requirements of the Property Owners Association Act, okay? And as proof of that, just the DPOR license that they are required to maintain has been out of date. It expired July 31, 2017. I don't need this, or if you'd like it, I printed it this morning.
Thanks, sir.
Basically, we have, basically, there is no accounting. They don't know who they're billing. Back in August of last year, they showed that they had like $2.5 million of receivables, of which probably $100,000 was collectible. They don't know who all the owners are. I've tried to help with that, but when you can't work together, it can't be done. They didn't know how to pay bills. They were out of money as of January 1st. They had their dues come in, so they got through some of it, okay? As of right now, the best that I can tell is that the billings, they're about $140,000 behind of what was billed for this year. Some of it will be due in June, okay? But the majority of it, they don't even know who it is. Some of the owners have basically told them, until you work on the roads, I'm not paying my dues. And they're thousands of dollars in arrears. We had one person that was, he had multiple properties and was foreclosed on. He owed almost $20,000 combined. That all went out the window because we didn't work on it. Was that the end of my time?
Go ahead and conclude.
Okay. But as you draw, we have had zero communication now in basically a year, other than we got something with the bill that was all wrong. Then later on, when two of the board members resigned and we replaced them, one, somebody came in. We've had nothing on there, other than some of the things that you said in the board meeting. We had two volunteers that were maintaining the Facebook account, but a former director basically threatened to sue them if they didn't stop. So that was the only communication that they had. We have trashy yards throughout the, which is in violation of the county ordinances. And, you know, people, the board should be going through to do that and stop that, get, okay? Myriad of covenants and regulations that are not being followed, okay? Payment of bills, payment of dues is one. Parking of construction equipment in the property, not following through with fees that are owed for construction. The roads are a mess, as people basically already said. And one of the things that I just discovered with some of this last rain is the culverts have not been cleaned out. And on my house in particular, yesterday and today, I was there trying to clean out the one culvert that's in front, because I was trying to figure, why is all this water in my front yard? Because I go uphill. Well, it was full of leaves and stuff like that, and the water was going everywhere, but in the pipe to go through, because I have a brook. Well, this is all along the brook. If it was cleaned, it would have gone through.
Try to conclude, sir, please.
Okay. So with that, basically, either we need a management team in there, sanitary district is one, or possibly, you know, go through and get enough people and put this thing into conservatorship, particularly because they're not following the Property Owners Association Act. And a lady by the name of Heather Gillespie, who, like I said, is the CIC manager, is well aware of everything that's there, and is just waiting for complaints to be filed. But I was hoping for the sanitary district.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Yes, sir.
David Williamson, and I own property in the Back Creek District in the Mountain Falls community. I'm also a former member of the Board of Governors, one of those volunteers that they were talking about. And I would tell you that this community is definitely too large for a volunteer organization to be able to effectively manage it. One of the challenges that has plagued the association has been the inability to effectively collect dues, as someone else had already mentioned, and that has limited financial resources. Limiting financial resources limits the Board of Governors' ability to be able to hire the proper amount and qualified type of staffing to be able to manage these roads, which is why you hear so many people that are complaining about the conditions of the roads, as they have continued to erode, no pun intended, over the years. And so it is of my opinion that a sanitary district is definitely worth valid consideration in this community, because the property values will not continue to increase in that community unless some of these issues are effectively addressed. The Board of Governors and that association does not have the ability to effectively address those road conditions. And so I would encourage you guys, as a Board of Supervisors, to at least advance into the next phase of this, to be able to at least do a cost analysis, to determine whether this would be equitable for the county to be able to take on. The residents are aware that there's probably going to be an increase in the amount of money that they're going to have to pay per year in their taxes as a sanitary district, as I do also in Shawnee Land. But in Shawnee Land, the road conditions are great comparatively, right? So hopefully you'll consider that as you look at this, and we can move forward to at least get a cost analysis before making a decision not to move forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Troy. Anyone else like to speak? Anyone?
I can speak more than once.
Not until everyone else has had an opportunity, but then yes. Okay? Yes, ma'am.
I wasn't planning on speaking, so I don't have anything written down, but I, my name's Jess Cutshaw. I live at 322 Winchester Drive in the Back Creek District. I'm a voter. I pay my taxes. I pay my dues. I live at 322 Winchester Drive. You guys got a PowerPoint presentation, and you also got a link to a Facebook page. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at that, but I'd really like for you to. I moved here in 2009, experienced my first devastating flood in April of 2010. When I came home, the foundation was washed from around my house. I had two feet of water in my crawl space. There's about $10,000 worth of equipment down there, and my septic was flooded. So I went to bed, and I said, well, I guess I'm moving out of here tomorrow. So I got up the next morning, and the water had receded. And at that time, I spent $4,500 to build a flood wall in front of my house. So that worked for a while. Then in 2016, October 2016, we had another flood. And I looked at the flood wall that was there, and I said, I don't think this is going to be good enough. So at that time, I spent $13,000 more to have a new flood wall built, to have sump pumps put in, drain lines and sump pumps in my septic, or my crawl space. And I'm not a rich person. I have spent pretty much my entire savings from my IRA trying to protect my property. I really wish you would take a look at the, particularly Winchester Drive and Mountain Falls Boulevard. That culvert, I've told the road crew about three years ago, the culvert that's in there is metal. It's got big, huge holes in it. It's going to collapse. We're just a mess. I don't see it getting any better. It's been a mess since I've been there, and I would really appreciate it if you could look at that, not necessarily the PowerPoint presentation, but the link, because it has videos and better pictures on the Facebook page, and see what I'm talking about, because I don't know what else to do. Like I said, this last, I have spent about a total of $18,000. I've got receipts for that. I'm a single old woman, and there's not any more money coming in. At this time in my life, I don't want to have to take another job just to live there. We need help. I'm begging you to help us. We desperately need help. We need something, more than what we have. I've been to every, almost every board meeting since I came there. There was a time when, up until this last year, that nobody went to the board meetings. They sell them, go now. I don't, there's a lot of apathy in the village there. And, but we desperately need help. I pay, personally, I pay $435 a year. Do I have to stop?
Just go ahead and complete. Go ahead and complete.
I pay $435 a year to live there, and I get nothing for it, except water in my front yard. I have a lake at my doorstep. My flood wall is two and a half feet high, and it's got footers, and it goes down to one and a half. And if you look at those pictures, it's within inches of coming over that flood wall. The water was so swift, it washed every bit of dirt out around the footers for my flood wall. I put 28 bags, I paid to have 28 bags of saccharic put back in there the day after the last flood, to reinforce that. But like I said, we're a mess. We're not going to get any better, and I, when I'm desperate, I would really appreciate any consideration that you could give us. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Anyone? Last call. Ma'am, three minutes, please.
This I don't have written down, because I didn't know I could come back again. But one of the things I want you to be aware of is that the mismanagement is so severe, there are actually three years of records missing that they don't have. The current board is filing nonjudicial liens against people. I personally know of two members who have been arguing, saying, hey, I paid this in full. And the board is putting the responsibility of those persons for their failures to come to them and prove to us that you have paid. And that's wrong. It's the responsibility of the POA to keep accurate banking records, to keep accurate, you know, receipts from the people that pay. And it's not getting any better. 38% of the people, as of the last board meeting for the Board of Governors, have been paying their dues. And the rest, I feel, are not paying, some of them probably because they just don't feel like it, but the majority of them are not paying because they're using their pocketbook to say, hey, I'm not giving you any more of my money to mismanage it. And it's very unfair, you know, everyone that lives there, I'm sure feels, as you would as well, that your home is your biggest investment, and it should be protected. And people that have bought in there, they end up stuck. A lot of them just let their houses go to foreclosure, just to be able to get out. There's, in addition to the three years of records that are missing, approximately, I've been told, there is about $880,000 in back dues that remain uncollected. But just recently, I was told that actually, that number won't be right, because there are people that who have died, and their property's been sold once or twice, and all three are being billed and still showing up on the books. It's in such a mess that I don't think that a full-time accounting firm would probably take them a year, because even the bills that are going out, people are being underbilled or overbilled. We had a 33 1/3% increase in our dues, January 1. They are on track right now to not have enough money to continue to the end of this year because of our DEQ problem and everything else we have going on with our outstanding expenses to Alpha Core and our prior attorney. And so if they do again this coming January, what they did last January, that will be a 67% increase in our dues in a one-year period of time. I do disagree with one thing Mr. Williamson said, and that is, I don't necessarily think that we would have to end up paying more than Shawnee Land. I'll make it quick. They have 52 miles of road. We have 26. The biggest problem that we have, our money is not being properly billed, collected, and applied where it needs to go. And so again, I really feel that if you don't take us on as a sanitary district, we will be bankrupt, and we will be in the position that Lake Holiday and Shawnee Land were when the courts approved sanitary district. And I hope you will take that into consideration. And thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak? Anyone? Very quickly, please.
I'm the same person. I have, for me, people complain about the roads, but I think the biggest problem that we have in Mountain Falls right now, other than the money situation, because you have 38% of the people that are paying, 62% that aren't paying, and, but our biggest problem right now is stormwater management. If you just drive through the community, you can see, we are ditchless. We are covertless. And, thank you. That's all.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else? As the public hearing portion, this is Back Creek.
Mr. Chairman, as you have heard of the stories of the issues that the residents in Mountain Falls Park are experiencing, and as Mrs. Shalapp said, when this first was brought to my attention, I thought, well, I was still under the assumption that you brought 50 signatures to the court. Court decided what you were going to do, and it's done. But in conversations with the county attorney and the county administrator, I found out that the Virginia legislature has, I don't know how to describe it, but they've changed the rules and put the burden on the county, and in doing so, put some additional rules in place for the county so that we would have, I think, what they thought guidelines to help us in this process. But I don't see them as guidelines. I see them as roadblocks, because, take just one example. We need to know that 50% or more of the residents, owners, or the owners in that area support a decision to make a sanitary district. How do we know? Mrs. Shalapp? And Ethel have gone out and circulated petitions, and we have those, but it's not 50%, and I don't know what method we would use to get that 50%. So to make this brief, since this is a very new process, and again, in conversations with the county administrator and the county attorney, I believe maybe the prudent thing to do, and I would move to do this, is to refer this to the Public Works Committee to develop a process in coordination with the county attorney and the county administrator, so that this board would have clearer definitions of what our responsibilities are and what our duties are in requests that come before us like this in the future.
So you've heard the motion? The motion is to refer the Public Works Committee to determine process. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Second?
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion?
I just have one question.
As well.
When it comes to public works, will we be, will this, Mountain Falls be one of the areas that we're looking at? Are we just looking for general?
I think Mountain Falls should basically be the catalyst for...
Okay.
...any process that might go forward. I don't know of any others that are coming forward, so I think the use of the Mountain Falls conditions would guide the Public Works Department into a broader context of what we need to do.
Okay. Sounds good to me.
Other discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir?
In theory, I agree 100% with you, Gary, on referring this to get some kind of a procedure in place, because I think it's helpful from an administrative standpoint, and especially from a layman's standpoint, trying to navigate how to do something as what seems insurmountable, as trying to get 500 to 750 people to agree to do something. There are smaller associations that would have trouble getting that number. My concern is that we have a statute that clearly says that this hearing is supposed to be a fact-finding hearing, at which we establish where the four criteria met, and my only concern is, are we going to make a determination per the statute, separate from this sort of administrative rule-making, policymaking? Because there's no procedure within the statute to sort of put it off unless we continue the public hearing, I would think, in order to...
I don't know that we need to consider, continue the public hearing, but we do need to follow a process yet to be determined, and Mr. Tierney... need to follow a process yet to be determined. And Mr. Tierney has some comments.
Well, I certainly understand Supervisor Lofton's motion and the thought behind it. But I wonder, in this particular situation, the process is one thing. But certainly, that process would have to entail, in this instance, some effort to determine a cost and magnitude of what this undertaking would involve. So although I hate to heap on more work to our Public Works Department, I wonder if it's maybe a two-pronged approach. One is maybe trying to come up with a process, but the other is specific to this instance, trying to figure out, based on miles of road and however many stream crossings or ditches or, you know, culverts are needed, trying to quantify what would it take to minimize the flooding, things of that nature, so that when we come back, the board has more information, we have more information, we can share it with the residents, where, once we can quantify a cost of what it takes to bring something up to a standard, we can figure out what it would cost the residents to pay that bill. And I think that's probably what's going to sway folks that are going to be deciding whether or not they want it. So I guess, my thought is that, in addition to a procedure that might be used for some future requests, that we actually delve into this particulars of Mountain Falls Park, and what might it take to...
I interpreted Supervisor Lofton's comment to include that part, but I don't want to speak for you, sir.
No, no, I agree. That's what I was looking for specifically. Like I say, we used the Mountain Falls Park as an example of, this is a request. And like I said, if we were to have to make a decision tonight, according to the state code, I don't know if it's physically responsible. Have no idea. I don't know that there's 50% of the owners up there that support this. Have no idea. And I don't know, I could not make a decision tonight. If I were to make a decision tonight, I'd say, no, this is no sanitary district, because I don't have enough information to guide my decision tonight. And I don't know where else to put it. I'd be open to suggestions. But to me, since Public Works already deals with Shawnee Land, in the same context of what we're talking about, I thought that might be the proper landing place for this. And I don't want to put staff to a whole lot of trouble. But I think we, as a board, need to know what information is required. How do we get that information? And how do we put that information into a process that will guide us to a proper decision?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Sort of to piggyback off of what Gary just said, and Chris, and also a question to the county attorney. The statute says that the hearing shall embrace a finding of fact, which means that if we close the public hearing, and we haven't gotten the information in order to make that finding of fact, that we haven't complied necessarily with the statute as written, is my interpretation of that. So my only suggestion is that we may want to keep the public hearing open until these things have been determined, so we can get a report back, so we can make the finding of fact. As Gary said, is it necessary? Is it practical? Is it financially responsible? And do we have 50%? So my only suggestion is that we not close the public hearing before we make, we have the information in order to make the finding of fact as required by the statute. And I guess my question to the county attorney is, would that be accurate?
I think that's a reasonable approach to follow, so that the board is following the, whatever the statute means, it's...
Yes.
I mean, even as to process, but not making the findings, it's poorly worded. Say it like it is.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Do you care to, yes, sir.
So that being said, I would just make a motion to amend Gary's motion to not only recommend this to Public Works, but to keep the public hearing open until such time as we have gotten reports back from Public Works with regard to the questions that were raised.
You've heard the amendment. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion? The vote is to continue the public hearing as an amendment to the prior motion. Are you ready?
But, Mr. Chairman, but this is only to amend the item. The discussion still continues, correct?
End the motion. Yes, sir. To keep the public hearing open.
But we will have an opportunity to make some additional comments as well.
We're going to, next to the motion that's on the floor.
Okay, okay, yeah, okay.
From the amendment. Okay. Any further discussion? All right. All who's in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Now we're at the amended motion to keep the public hearing open, and refer to the Public Works Committee for more information. Discussion.
Yes, discussion. So, my question to all of you is, I hear the people that have said they have a problem. But it sounds as if, if their HOA had, was in a strong financial position, we would not be having a sanitary discussion at all. But because of either embezzlement, bankruptcy, or whatever other reasons, we're being asked to set up a government agency potentially to solve a problem. My question is, when we go to Public Works, can we address the issue of what constitutes options? So, if there's embezzlement issues, I would think that's a legal issue, that the homeowners could go and go against their board. I don't know. But that's...
We have no basis to follow up on that one.
The other thing, Mr. Chairman, I just asked the question, that as Public Works considers this, at least they consider other alternatives that the homeowners could currently use to recover potentially, potentially lost money and work to address the issue. That's all.
It's beyond our scope.
Your comment. Any further discussion? All who's in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? We'll refer to Public Works. Thank you, folks, for coming up. All right. We'll bring us to an updated draft of the 2018-2019 Frederick County Primary Interstate Road Program, and the joint public hearing therefore. Mr. Bishop?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a moment here to make sure I drew the carmuse slides, since that was deferred. As you have noted, this is the annual update of your interstate primary and secondary road plans, with the secondary road plan being the one that is statutorily required, while the interstate and primary plans are plans which Frederick County has traditionally still done to make, and submitted as well, to make sure VDOT stays apprised of where your priorities are, and that those priorities remain updated. With that said, we have a couple updates in front of you at the DIAS. The first of those is, the resolution format was updated for all three. The words were not changed, with the exception of the Interstate Road Improvement Plan, in which we have added the final whereas, and the now therefore be it also resolved, or now additionally therefore be resolved, that in order to add support for VDOT's current effort, the CTB's current effort, to add the Exit 313 Bridge to the current six-year improvement program. So, this resolution will be serving really two purposes, both to show the board's support, should you choose to adopt the resolution for that movement, as well as the plan itself. Additionally, there is an updated major road improvement program map, which adds Jewel Early Drive. It was in the table in your draft that you received in your packet, but it was not on the map. As you noted, Mr. Chairman, this will be a joint public hearing with the Virginia Department of Transportation. We do have Ed Carter, who is your Edinburgh Residency Administrator here from VDOT as well. With that said, I'll go right into the Interstate Road Improvement Program. Of course, any year with only one interstate, it's not a terribly complicated plan for us. But of course, 81 is, has a very big impact on us every day. But with that, we have updated the priorities from, they used to be letters, now they're numbers, to make sure they're consistent with the primary plan. And we have placed Exit 313 as the top priority, and Exit 317 as the second priority. Previously, Exit 310, which was your first priority, but now it is the third. And this, of course, this is the recommendation of the Transportation Committee. Reason for Exit 313 at number one is, simply put, that is your most structurally deficient bridge in the entire Stanton District that is not already funded. And you do have, through the NPL, an application going forward, and obviously, that CTB effort that I mentioned just a moment ago. And 317 continues to have congestion and safety problems, and you are also, have already approved for your staff to put in that smart scale application to support that. So, we've updated the priorities, frankly, to reflect your actions. With that, I'll move on to the primary road improvement plan. Probably the largest ranking change on the primary road improvement plan was to recommend that Route 11 be advanced above Route 277. The reason for this, of course, is increasing congestion, safety concerns on Route 11, frankly, both north and south, and the fact that Route 277, the most in-need portion, continues to be funded and is moving toward bid, that section from I-81, Exit 307, to Double Church Road. That's still on your plan, because it's not actually built yet, but as it's funded, and you have applications, once again, going for smart scale for Route 11, north and south, that's been promoted above that as well. Additional changes to your primary plan are that we have broken up 277 into more, to use my language, bite-sized pieces. Simply put, smart scale, if you look at the first two rounds that have been completed, the fact of the matter is, your big, big-ticket projects are simply not getting approved. So we took another look at Route 277 to try and figure out sections that have logical utility, independent utility, and recommended some smaller segments. So that said, it's now shown in four segments. I've already referred to your first priority, your first segment of 277, which is currently funded. We are now calling for the second phase of 277 to be Double Church Road to Warrior Drive, the third phase to be Warrior Drive to White Oak Road, and then finally, White Oak Road out to Route 522. Technically, you're tripping into Clark County a little bit there, but it just doesn't make a lot of sense, at least from a staff perspective, to say that the road should be just at the border, when you're talking a couple hundred feet to the Clark County line and the Double Tollgate intersection. Moving on, the other addition to the primary plan was the intersection of Route 522 and Costello Drive. Once again, this is in support of one of your smart-scale applications, in which we are trying to add additional left-turn capacity for folks that are southbound on Route 522 to turn onto Costello Drive. Right now, we do have a fairly serious stacking issue there, that frankly, isn't getting any less. Now, as I transition to the secondary road improvement plan, we do begin with your major road improvement plan. The map on the screen is updated, and matches the one that was delivered to you at your DIAS this evening. Key project on there, at number one, is Sulfur Springs Road. It's been at number one on this plan for a number of years, frankly. However, the good news is that that is expected to go to advertisement prior to November of this year. So that's moving along nicely. And I think that's, actually, that's been on the plan as long as, as long as I've been with the county. So it will be nice to actually see it get done. Number two is the Red Bud Road Realignment. You may recall that during the year, you did a number of transfers to show Red Bud Road is fully funded, so that is still there present at number two. And as you look at three through nine, those are all of your revenue sharing projects, with the exception of Town Road Lane. Moving on to your non-hard surface road improvement projects, these are the roads that are expected to be paved. They're currently dirt roads, they're expected to be paved over the next six years. Frankly, VDOT cost estimation has allowed us to promote more roadways. The roads have been coming in cheaper than they've been expecting it to, so they have modified their cost estimation. We actually promoted eight roads this time around. Now, one through four, Pack House, both segments of Laurel Grove and Hollow Road are continued from your update last year. But we were able to add North Sleepy Creek, Babs Mountain Road, Old Baltimore Road, Middle Fork Road, Timberlakes Lane, East Parkins Mill Road, and Fletcher Road. And of course, those are in the order that resulted from your scoring system being applied. Moving on to your non-hard surface list, moving eight off, we were able to chip away, but we did add a few more through the year. So now, we did add Rhubuck Lane, Grace Church Road, and also Gardner's Road. Now, those came in at eight, nine, and 11 because of their scoring, once again, under your adopted system. And you have a total of 18 now. It's the first time you've been under 20, actually, in some time. So that's definitely some positive progress. We're excited about that. I would note, as I always need to, that these projects are based on VDOT revenue projections, not guarantees, projections. You have been in that place in the past, where sometimes we have to make adjustments when those projections change. But thankfully, we've been on a good trend for a few years now. So hopefully, this'll prove true. But that's noted in the plan, and I want to make sure I'm reminding you of that. With that, the Transportation Committee recommended these items on May 21 for approval. Your Planning Commission reviewed it last Wednesday on June 6, and has also recommended approval. I would note that in the meantime, it was the same day that we were getting all the flooding in the western portion of the county. I did receive an email from a resident on Cattail Road, which you'll note is number 14 on your unpaid list. They were, of course, affected by the flooding, as weren't many others, and asked that you reconsider where they showed in the ranking, and whether they promoted or not. Of course, I wasn't able to satisfy that, based on, based on the adopted system, and very many roads, including even Route 50 and 522, were heavily impacted that week as well. So, not to make light of their concerns, but I also did not want to leave them unshared with the board. With that, I can take any questions you may have, and remind you that Mr. Carter is here from VDOT as well.
Questions for Mr. Bishop, anyone?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Suppose you're done.
Mr. Bishop.
Yes, sir.
I made the comments on Sulfur Springs Road. So on page 211 of your item, it talks about Sulfur Springs. I've talked to VDOT, and the intersection between Sulfur Springs and Greenwood is significant. So if you complete that, and don't take into account a possible future interchange there, there's a further cost. So I'll leave it to you and to VDOT to address that issue. As recently as two weeks ago, we had another accident there. If you talk to the Sheriff's Department, he will tell you, it's accident-prone consistently, summer, winter, spring, and fall, because of that S-curve. So, if you do, if you don't do Sulfur Springs Road, you got either put something in there for future Greenwood, or address in some manner. But that's important.
Part of what's being done to Sulfur Springs Road addresses the site distance at that intersection, which inadequate site distance is often a key reason for safety problems. Now, I've not analyzed those crashes, and can't say with certainty that that's why those crashes happened. However, what this project does do is improve the site distance at that intersection to where it meets VDOT standards. It does not go north on Greenwood Road and address the S-curve. That's something that we still will need addressed in our planning going forward. But that, that portion has never actually been funded.
Mr. Chairman, just one other additional comment, Mr. Bishop, and that is, that I understand the site distance, I go through there a lot, but that S-curve is such, that there's two S-curves actually in there, and that's where your accidents have been occurring. And so if that road is straightened out or something, and it comes out someplace different than the current intersection, if they do something on Sulfur Springs, they have to have something willing to accept that. I just, I make it as a comment, is a strong suggestion. But I just want you to be aware of that. That's important.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sir, other questions for Mr. Bishop? Thank you, sir. Mr. Carter, anything you'd like to add, sir?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bishop's done a fine job. Every year, we're using every dollar we have, but it's precious, and I want to reexamine each year. Our budgets each year are based on projected revenues. And as the economy goes, so goes our budget. Frederick County has, by far, in way in our area, one of the best methodologies for identifying your roads and towards your biggest finding for the precious dollars.
Thank you, sir. All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to comment concerning these proposed new adopted road plans? Anyone at all? Anyone? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing portion.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I would move that the Board of Supervisors approve the update to the 2018-2019 Frederick County Primary and Interstate Road Improvement Plans as presented tonight.
All right, you've heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And a second. Is there any discussion? Yes, sir.
I will say this kind of tongue-in-cheek. Yesterday, VDOT held a hearing in Stralsburg, mainly to discuss the Exit 313, or the 313... mainly to discuss the Exit 313, or the 313 Bridge, and I bristle at that because VDOT comes in to tell us, and no reflection on our residency here, but VDOT comes in to tell you that the bridge is failing, it's failing, and so what we want Frederick County to do is ask us to replace that bridge. I just, I'm sorry, I just have a problem with that. If they know it's failing, why should we have to apply for a grant on a smart scale to rebuild that bridge that was part of the interstate system and should be taken care of? If VDOT's engineers and the federal government agree that it's in bad shape and needs to be replaced, they should take action, they should take front and center stage and just replace the bridge. Why should Frederick County have to ask them to do it? That's my comment.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Two of us attended that meeting yesterday, so I'll second Mr. Lofton's comments on that. It's a point that I hadn't thought through, and there was a comment yesterday on whether federal dollars are also involved in this I-81 intersection, so if there are federal dollars that are involved here, what Mr. Lofton said, I might have some, I'd like to explore further.
Thanks, sir.
Anyone else? All right, are we ready to vote? So it'd be Supervisor McCarthy.
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter.
Aye.
Supervisor Wells.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor Trout.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We endorse the plan and the resolution of support for Exit 313.
Mr. Chairman.
Public hearing.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
There were, I think, two separate sets of resolutions, three, and I'm not sure if Mr. Lofton's motion actually covered all of them, because I thought I heard him say interstate and primary.
So would you like a motion of clarification?
Either that or a separate motion to approve the others, unless somebody has a different understanding.
Okay, so you heard interstate.
So we're looking for primary and...
Primary and secondary?
I think I heard interstate and primary, I'm not sure if I heard secondary.
I apologize.
That's okay.
So I move...
Ms. Phillips?
I'm sorry.
Which did you hear?
I was, had the same question, I wasn't sure that you included all three in your motion.
Which did you hear?
I heard interstate and primary, but I wasn't sure about...
Okay, so we're looking for secondary.
So, okay, my motion was intended to incorporate it all, but I'll do a separate ordinance then.
That'd be good.
I was merely opining on the 313. I would move, for the Board of Supervisors, to adopt the 2018, 19 Secondary Road Improvement Plan as presented.
Heard the motions, are second.
Second.
And a second, is there any further discussion? All right, so resolution, Supervisor McCarthy.
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter.
Aye.
Supervisor Wells.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn.
Aye.
Supervisor Trout.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Klein. Thank you, Mr. Williams.
You're welcome.
That will bring us to a public hearing on buffers and other issues. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors. This is a proposed amendment to Chapter 165, the zoning ordinance, to modify the requirements for residential separation buffers for certain housing types in the county's RP Residential Performance Zoning District. As you all are aware, residential separation buffers are required to adequately buffer different housing types from dissimilar housing types within adjacent but separate developments. The Board of Supervisors previously approved an amendment to the residential separation buffer requirements on December the 13th, 2017. The approved amendment at that time effectively changed the required buffer between townhome units and single-family detached units, and between townhome units and single-family small lot attached and detached units, from a Category B type buffer to a Category A type buffer. As a simple example, a Category A type buffer with a full screen that includes distance, landscape, and a six-foot-tall fence, wall, mound, or berm requires a total distance of 25 feet. That buffer would contain a 15-foot inactive buffer and a 10-foot active buffer. For comparison, a Category B type buffer of the equivalent screening would require a total distance of 50 feet, that includes a 30-foot inactive portion and a 20-foot active distance buffer. At your May 9th meeting, the Board of Supervisors expressed concern to staff regarding the unintended consequences of providing relief in the buffer requirements for certain housing types as the result of the approved text amendment. This discussion arose during an information item regarding a by-right development and review of a master development plan. Specifically, the Board of Supervisors cited concerns on increasing the intensity of development and the potential impact it may have to county services. The Board of Supervisors then directed staff to initiate the process to reinstate the required Category B type buffer between townhome units and single-family detached units, and between townhome units and single-family small lot units. This amendment would effectively double the required buffer distance for certain housing types back to the original requirements that were in the zoning ordinance prior to December 2017. After considerable discussion, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the text amendment to reinstate the Category B type buffer requirement between certain housing types at their June 6 meeting. Following a public hearing this evening, staff is seeking a decision by the Board of Supervisors on this proposed text amendment. Happy to answer any questions you may have as it pertains to the ordinance amendment. Thank you.
Questions, Mr. Klein. Supervisor Slaughter.
Yes, sir. Mr. Klein, at our May 9th meeting, you talked about the buffer requirements and also the impact that it would have on the master development plan that we were, that you had brought forward for information. Would you kindly speak to the impact of this MDP and the change that the buffer, the reduced buffer ordinance, how that would impact the total number of units, and also if you could touch upon the by-right implications as that master development plan was originally laid out?
So to answer the first part of the question, the application under consideration on May 9th was a master development plan for Regions Crest. They had an approved subdivision design plan that was approved by staff in 2015 for a total of 66 units. The 2018 master development plan that they submitted was approved for a total of 99 units, which was a net gain of 33 units from the 2015 approval. As you all are aware, the maximum density allowed in the RP Residential Performance District is 10 dwelling units per acre, so effectively, the reduction in the buffer allowed that developer in particular to utilize 100% of the density that is by right on their site.
Understand that without the buffer adjustment, would it have been necessary to have waivers to accommodate the additional units that you are speaking?
Given the housing type that they had originally in 2015, they were not able to utilize the full density of the site, and the reduction in the buffer distance allowed them to utilize that housing type to a higher percentage of the density on the lot.
So it is fair to say, then, that the change in the buffer reduction allowed for a higher density in that area?
It didn't allow for a higher density because the density of the site remained unchanged, which was 10 dwellings per acre. However, it allowed the developer to utilize 100% of the density on their site.
Thank you, sir.
Let me be clear, as I understand that, we're talking buffers and density, that's two different things, but when we're talking density on this particular parcel of land, and you talked about housing type, I could change my housing type down to a different type of housing, lower-class housing, smaller-type housing, however you want to determine that, and still have probably reconfigured and, without changing the buffer ordinance, and still gotten the 33 units on that property? Would that be clear, too?
Potentially, yes.
Potentially, yes, okay, so really, it's not apples to apples when we're, we had the, the builder had the ability to decide whether to build that type of house or a different type of house that would give him the 99 units if he wanted it.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Thank you.
Other questions, Mr. Klein, anyone?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Dunn.
Mr. Klein, I'll ask you the question because it's going to come up, I think, as we go forward with this. We talked about the buffer of 50 feet and 25 feet, eight, nine, 10 years ago, and that's why I'm going to ask you a question. The density, I've been told, was approximately four units per acre, and now it was increased to 10 units per acre. Is that accurate or approximately accurate?
Not aware of the specifics, but I'll defer to Mr. Ruddy.
Sometime, I'm not holding on to the 10 years, but sometime ago, I was told that the density was four, the number of units per acre was four, that then was increased to 10.
What we have been seeing is an average density through the UDA of two to three units an acre. There's a sliding scale that has been in place for quite a while in the RP District, and for lots that are 10 acres or less, that's where the 10 units per acre standard is, and I believe that has been in place for quite some time. I honestly would have to double-check when that was put into play, but again, the 10 units per acre on parcels less than 10 acres in size has been in play for some time in the RP District.
Okay, I thought at one point in time it was four. It's all right.
And again, as you go up in acreage, then your density decreases, if you will, so if you have, again, I believe it's over 100 acres, then you go down to a smaller density, which is four units, yes, but that is on larger parcels, not parcels less than 10 acres, and I believe it's been in play for a while.
Thank you, thank you.
Other questions, Mr. Klein? Supervisor?
No, I'm good.
Sorry, misjudged. Anyone else? Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing, would anyone like to comment concerning this proposed change?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Patrick Sowers, Peckham District.
Patrick.
Just...
There you go, well done, thanks, sir.
Be...
You have to talk to it.
Good effort. I wanted to kind of touch on kind of the planning and design principles or reasons, why did this come before the Board in the first place? And it kind of, to preface that, I wanted to, I heard the question about Regions Crest specifically. That project ended up at 9.9 units per acre, within that 10 units per acre, which is the specific maximum ordinance allowed density for that project. That project actually has, on two sides, has an existing 100-foot platted buffer on the adjoining property. The way the zoning ordinance works, you can't use that adjoining 100-foot buffer to count towards any of your residential separation buffer, so even though there's already a 100-foot buffer, a fence, landscaping, there is still going to be a 50-foot buffer required with its own fence, with its own landscaping. But as far as density and did this text amendment allow it to suddenly get to 9.9 units per acre? That product type there is a 29-foot-deep product type, it's a relatively small townhouse footprint. If it was as small as, say, a 26-foot-deep product type, even with the existing, with the same layout, with 50-foot buffers, you could still achieve the same 9.9 units per acre. So all this ordinance amendment did was provide a little bit more flexibility, and the reason that flexibility is necessary is because you're not hitting 10 units per acre, that one is, anything is an outlier. Typically, you're going to hit maybe six, seven, eight units per acre max, and that's because you have all these other design parameters you have to deal with. You have the newest stormwater management regs, that's taking up a lot of additional space because it's more stringent on your stormwater quality requirements, you've got access requirements, you've got setbacks, you've got existing topography, and how do you fit your site in with grading on that existing topography? So the purpose of it was to give a little more flexibility, to get more density in the UDA, or actually even just, not even get more density, to get the density that's already permitted within the zoning ordinance, focus that in the UDA, which is the comprehensive plan's goal. Focus it in UDA, you can provide it with public services more efficiently, whether it's fire and rescue, schools, you're sending buses within UDA, not outside, you're taking pressure off the rural areas. So that was the concept of why this was presented, and I know I don't have a whole lot of time, but if you look at the zoning, the purpose of the buffers is to separate the similar uses. This is a residential separation buffer, in a separate section of the ordinance, you have zoning district buffers. A zoning district buffer for a B2 to an RP piece of property, so if you have a Sheetz or McDonald's, would be required to provide a 50-foot buffer. Yet, a townhouse is required to provide a 50-foot buffer. I would ask, are those two uses equally dissimilar to a single-family detached home? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name's Willie Akins, I'm from the Gainesboro District. I work for H&amp;W Construction and the Akins Group, but this evening, I'm speaking on behalf of the top of Virginia Builders Association. As a resident and now businessman living in Frederick County, over the past 40 years, we've seen many changes. When making the decision to come back to Winchester after receiving my degree, many thoughts crossed my mind. I wanted a community that was large enough to provide entertainment and culture, but small enough to raise a family. Thoroughly, I wanted a community that I could make a difference in. Over the past year, we've entered into back into a market that is good for the county and our country. The economy is booming, and it's time for business. Unfortunately, the county is not promoting a culture to let the business prosper. As an active TVA member, I've seen tap fees increase with little to no notice to the community, I've seen more stringent regulation changes in the building industry, and a board, in my opinion, that has gone, been given the order to not even look at the proffer law. On top of this, we also have a report that indicates we have overcrowding of schools. This needs to change. The county needs to look at all the problems on a more cumulative basis and not independently, and needs to realize that when business is doing well, the county does well. We need to be more inclusive than exclusive in the decisions that we make, so that the burden is not placed on one industry. Home building in the state of Virginia represents 314,000 jobs, $47.8 billion to the Virginia's economy. Frederick County being located in the I-81 corridor, just an hour out of DC, is perfect for strong, smart economic growth. The TVBA is an advocate for this smart growth and believes that it should be done in the UDA. By allowing flexibility in the buffer, it achieves many milestones in which the planners before you have intended. It achieves and allows density in the areas where the public wants it, it utilizes utilities and services in the areas that already exist, and it eliminates sprawl in the county and protects farmland. Your quick reactions over the past couple weeks by rescinding this text amendment may too have unintended consequences. It eliminates workforce housing in an already limited market where there is limited housing. It will force developers to look outside the UDA into areas that we do not want to have developed. It reduces the quality of the product that is produced in the allowable lot sizes and lessens the quality of the tax base, and it conveys a sense of bad business from Frederick County's standpoint. Tonight, I ask you to please reconsider and not rescind the text amendment. The TVBA, along with other builders, are more than happy to sit down with you or staff to discuss this further. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Supervisors. My name's Robert Fergel, I reside at 202 Robinson Drive, I'm in the Back Creek District. I also own a company, Anandale Millwork Corporation, Allied Systems Corporation. We're engaged in manufacturing of building products, we employ 270 people. The quick reversal of this ordinance amendment approved in December 2017 after nine months of study makes no sense to me. Housing density and growth should be centered in the county's urban development area. I'd like to refer you to a report by the Virginia Coalition of Housing and Economic Development Researchers titled "Addressing the Impact of Housing for Virginia's Economy." The report was advanced by Governor McAuliffe in 2014 to identify and implement actions to enable quality, affordable housing, which will strengthen families and communities and foster economic growth. VCU, George Mason... VCU, George Mason, Virginia Tech, and William and Mary did the research. In the report, it stresses that there is a crisis in affordable housing and that a lack of affordable housing is detrimental to the local economy. The report discusses how Virginia will need new desirable housing to attract workers, especially young workers who will be making up a large part of the workforce. It also discusses how Virginia localities demonstrate that housing stock can attract or discourage business location and expansion. Housing affordability affects children and the future workforce. One in three households in Virginia need more affordable housing. Unaffordable housing diminishes children's economic potential. The state and locality will need to encourage location-efficient development. More accessible, efficient land use patterns are expected to increase employment, economic productivity, land values, and tax revenues owing to the combined effects of improved accessibility and reduced transportation costs. Regions that coordinate activity around existing infrastructure can reduce transportation costs for businesses, workers, and residents. Everything in this report that I'm reading to you directly contradicts the current plan that the Board of Supervisors has by reverting back to the old buffer requirements. Using buffer requirements to reduce the number of houses that can be built in the UDA and to reduce the yield even further when density is allowed makes no sense. It will drive up the cost of housing and also waste valuable land in the UDA. Rather than make this a quick reversal to the buffer amendment, let's keep the current amendment or study the issue so we make good use of our existing infrastructure and buildable lots within the UDA. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board.
You have to really push on it.
Right. We're not kidding about that.
There you go.
Is that better?
Yes.
Good evening. I'm Stephen Pettler. I'm a resident of the Stonewall District, and I also own some land in the Gainesboro District. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of myself, on behalf of the top of Virginia Builders Association, and also on behalf of some clients, including the Gantz family, who has a significant tract of land that is directly affected by this decision to possibly repeal the buffer ordinance. And I would like to point out to the board that really what we're doing here tonight is exactly what you did on December 13, 2017. The only difference being that decision that was made that night was a result of nine months of deliberation through the DRC and the Planning Commission and this body, considering what the effect of the buffer ordinance is on encouraging development in the UDA in conformity with the comprehensive plan. You voted for that. Ms. Slaughter didn't vote for it, and Mr. Dunn didn't vote for it. They were outvoted. They liked 50-foot buffers better than 25-foot buffers between these two different types of housing. We're here tonight because of a misunderstanding. Ms. Slaughter raised the issue on May 9 that this ordinance amendment somehow increased the density that was available on the property at the Regent's Crest development over in Sunnyside. That is not correct. I think Ms. Slaughter would admit now that that was a misunderstanding that was communicated to her, perhaps, but it was a misunderstanding nonetheless. And that caused some concern that led the board to make the motion to initiate this process, to reconsider the amendment to the buffer ordinance. If you remove that misunderstanding, nothing has changed. There have been no unintended consequences as a result of this buffer ordinance being amended. In fact, the intended consequences are what occurred. A owner of property was able to use all of the density that was provided to it by right, which reduces the demand for units outside of the UDA and puts those units into the UDA, exactly like you all wanted it to be in December. I noted in the staff report in December, as it was presented, Mr. Klein stated, "The intent of this modification is to provide flexibility for smaller infill-type lots in the RP zoning district, ensuring the desired housing types and densities are cited where they are planned for as part of the county's 2035 comprehensive plan's long-range land use plan." You did it, and it worked. Now you're being asked to reconsider that without any more deliberation, knowing that there are a number of builders and developers in our community, local people and people from outside, the Gantz family, people who've spent tens of thousands of dollars in relying on the buffer ordinance as it is and making plans for submittal for agency comments that if this is repealed, will lose all of that investment of time and money. That is a real and direct consequence of the repeal of this ordinance. So we ask you to please consider the fact that you already made this decision once, keep it like it is, and do not repeal the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
David Williamson, Gainesboro District, and I also have a number of rental properties in just about every district that you guys represent. And I did not come to speak on behalf of this hearing tonight. I came for the one I spoke about already. However, I would like to just offer my input as a real estate investor that I deal with on a regular basis. The lack of rental property in this area, there's a lot of influx of job market, which is obviously great for Frederick County and stimulating economic growth, but at the same time, it's going to push the amount of housing up. And, you know, as a real estate investor, you know, a couple of things that I deal with. One is, you know, what type of properties do I want to buy in to be able to rent from? The other is, I'm working with people, in many cases, that are transient, moving into this area because of a job transfer, that they're going to later want to be able to purchase a property, you know, after they have gotten established here. And so part of what I do with my tenants is I help them to be able to transition into purchasing a property. And, you know, I think that we want to be able to have as much homeownership in the area as possible, and I don't think that you want to continue to gobble up some of the more rural areas and, you know, increase housing density in those areas. So from what I've gathered in listening here tonight, it sounds like you guys are considering repealing a decision that you previously made that would allow for more efficient use in the closer-in areas of the county, to be able to more efficiently utilize that for housing. And so I would be in favor of how it stands rather than repealing it because I believe that if we continue to vote for economic growth in this area, getting more people living in this area is just a natural byproduct of that. And so I think that needs to be considered as part of your decision.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Anyone? Yes, sir.
Jason Akins, Gainesboro District. I'm going to, since I've got three minutes, speak very simply on this matter. Reversing the decision that was made back in December is simply going to make lots within Frederick County undevelopable. I mean, we, the choice to change the buffers have freed up pieces of land that are now able to be developed that are developer-friendly. And what I mean by that is that land won't be developed, period, within the UDA, certain pieces, if they don't cash flow. It's a simple business decision. And by adjusting the buffers, I can still get the density that I need, okay, without the buffers being adjusted, period. But if I put a different type of home or a townhome on the lot that aligns with the comprehensive plan stating that goal number one, that a strategy to satisfy goal number one was to provide a various densities within the UDA to encourage a concentrated growth while also accommodating a consumer choice, remember that, for a variety of housing options, okay? So if the, by adjusting the buffer back in December, I'm able, as a developer, to put a better home, a bigger home, or a more affordable home, depending on the project that was referenced earlier, by making a smaller project, or, excuse me, a smaller home, to make the project work. If the projects don't work, then the comprehensive plan that's done in 2030, for 2035, will not actualize. And it's, I think, everybody's job or civic duty to try to uphold the plan that was established. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Anyone? Would anyone else like to comment concerning this proposed ordinance change? Yes, sir.
My name's Don Gantz. I live in the Back Creek District. I was at the Planning Commission meeting. Part of this public hearing process should be the input from the public. Nobody at the public hearing at the Planning Commission spoke to change this law, and I didn't hear anybody, you know, from the public go against it tonight either. And so I think you ought to consider that before you think about changing the law again. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sir, anyone else? Anyone? Last call. We'll close the public portion of the discussion. How would the board like to handle this one?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes? Supervisor Slaughter?
Oh, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I certainly made the motion at our last meeting to revert back to the buffer zones that we had as of December 17 or prior to December 17. We've had a number of discussions regarding that, and the reason that I voted against it in December was that I felt like the buffer zones that we had were adequate to provide protection to existing property landowners. And the understanding that I have for buffer ordinances are to protect existing landowners. And I know the gentleman just spoke before that the public has not come out to speak to us. But the fact of the matter is, is that the existing property owner who has adjoining land to the property has no notice of this until the development already occurs. This is not like a rezoning where a property owner is given proper notice to say, "We are considering a change in the zoning to allow or to shorten the buffer that you have enjoyed as a property owner, perhaps your entire life." It simply will be changed, and the only notice that the existing citizens will receive is when this unit is placed at their adjoining property. So for that reason, I still am in favor of the buffer ordinance that we had prior to December 17. And I think that it is only appropriate that we take this time to study this as planning sent back our requested recommendation, and that would be to leave the buffer rezonings or the buffer requirements as they stood. So that is my motion, sir.
Heard the motion. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'll second it, but I just want to make certain there's clarification. So when you say "as they stood," meaning as they stood with a 50-foot buffer prior to December 17th last year?
Yes, sir.
I'll second that.
Okay. Second discussion.
I'm fine.
Supervisor Lofton?
Mr. Chairman, as Mr. Pettler has rightly pointed out, and so have others, this change back in 2017 was not done in the dark of the night or away from public comment. It went through the DRC, it went through the Planning Commission, it went through the board, public hearings were held, and as Mrs. Slaughter has said, maybe some people didn't understand that or feel like they had some skin in this game, but I don't know how you would contact all those people who might be affected. But I go back to the fact that, A, that this does not increase the density of anybody's land. B, as been pointed out, that we made a conscious decision to change the buffers by majority vote, and there have been people that have spent tens of thousands of dollars working to develop their property under those rules. So if we change the rule back in the middle of the game, what happens to those people when, in fact, it does not increase the density? There's basically, the capital impact would be negligent because I probably feel that the developers could work around most of that anyway. As Mr. Akins has pointed out, there are some properties that can be developed now, and I feel they rightly should be in the UDA. That takes pressure off the rural areas, which I am very concerned about. And so the people living within the UDA should have a reasonable expectation that it's going to be close quarters. That's what our comprehensive plan calls for. And so I would not revoke, I could not support repealing the change that we made in December.
Supervisor Dunn, hold up, guys. Not a pep rally. Supervisor Dunn.
I've chatted with, okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me just lay out some thoughts. I've spent a good bit of time today talking to some of you that are sitting in this audience tonight. I've been on the receiving end of what we're talking about as well. So I'll lay out some comments. Number one, we're talking about 25 feet. That's less than 10 yards, less than a first down in a football game. But for those 25 feet, that's a judgment call. It's a judgment call on what is appropriate and what's not appropriate between different types of housing. If the proposal had been instead of 25 feet, 15 feet or 10 feet, would that have made the land more valuable? Perhaps. Would it have changed the density? Perhaps. If it had been 55 feet or 60 feet or 70 feet, would that have changed it the other way? Perhaps. So my point is that the 25 to 50 feet, we're talking about 25-feet difference, and it does have a direct effect on some, I understand that. But when I voted in December for 50 feet, I voted for December 50 feet because I wanted to see a wider corridor. I live in a home that is directly next to, or what was next to, a farm that was developed, sovereign village. And so if you had told me that you were going to have then a house 25 feet from my property line as opposed to 50 feet, I would have said yes. To the gentleman, Mr. Akins, that said, "No one hears here in the public," I think, and I could be wrong, but most people don't even understand that until the equipment moves in, and then they say, "Oh, what's happening?" For those of you that are in the building community, you know this business well. For those that are in the residential, that live here, they're not in this on a day-to-day basis the way you are. At the same time, I'm sympathetic to the fact that there are business people here who have gone and are running a business based upon what was done in December. So you're making business decisions on that, spending real dollars to try to advance something, and I'm sympathetic to that. I also understand there's a difference between buffers and setbacks, and that's another issue. For that reason, I think that those business people who already have projects ongoing, have invested money, et cetera, I'm willing to go and make a motion or an amendment to the motion to table this until our next meeting. And the purpose is to go and see if language can be written, to go and grandfather those existing projects between December of last year, when this motion was done, and today, to essentially grandfather those people that were doing business operations then. From my personal viewpoint, I still think the 50 buffers, as Ms. Slaughter said, is an appropriate item. We can disagree on that. If you ask people in Redbud, "Would you like to have a house 25 feet behind you or 50 feet?", we can walk through and ask 100 people and see what they say. I understand that from a development viewpoint, more is better, but my question to you is, how dense is dense? And that's a judgment call. In addition, we have costs. And so although there's a density issue, we also have a proffer issue because every house that's built is a cost to the county, and that's another discussion that I hope we could have, but that is playing part of this. So I will make an amendment or a motion to amend Ms. Slaughter's motion to table this for, until our next meeting. And before anybody makes any comment on that, just recognize I've been told that I may not have the votes to win this, and that's okay. But if it goes through, we'll table it. If you think that you have the votes to win tonight, I guess you're going to vote otherwise. you're going to vote otherwise. But it will give us a chance to talk through some of this item. One other comment. I got a, in our packet, I got an item from a developer, and in which he said that he made a business decision, and I'm quoting, "with anticipation of a successful text amendment." In other words, he was making a business decision in anticipation of changing from 50 feet to 25 feet. He was correct on what he thought would occur, but you can't say that's a reason to go and change back. You make a business decision, and then it turns out the other way. So I would just slightly disagree with that. So having said that, I'll make a motion to go and amend to, or table this until the next board meeting.
All right. There's a motion to amend to table until our next meeting. Is there a second? Second? Sorry, I'm sure your motion will die for lack of a second. So further discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor McCarthy?
I'd like to address a couple items. One item that was brought up is the buffer distance between 25 and 50 feet is a judgment call. And I would just like to point out that was a judgment call that we made back in December, when we discussed whether or not it was appropriate to have a 25-foot buffer, or a 50-foot buffer. And I understand that there are certain supervisors who at that time disagreed with that decision, but we did make a decision in December. So I hesitate to let that drive the discussion forward, considering that it's already been voted on within the last, you know, seven months. That decision's been made. With, I certainly understand Supervisor Slaughter's concern about neighbors having notice and things of that nature. But on the flip side of that, I look at it and say, do the neighbors really have an expectation of what the buffer is? I would venture a guess that most folks that are buying properties don't have a clue as to what the expected buffer is. Therefore, they don't have a real expectation that the buffer exists at 50 or 25 feet. So what we're really dealing with at this point is a question of what makes the most sense from a comprehensive planning standpoint, which is what drove the discussion up until December. The unintended consequence that arose, which I'm most sympathetic to, is the fact that regardless of the fact that there's no increased density, there is an increase in number of units that's available with this plan, which does impact the county in ways that affect our pocketbook with regard to increasing costs for our school system, our fire and rescue, things of that nature. But I think those types of things were considered as part of the comprehensive plan when we came up with the idea that we would have a certain density within the UDA. So from that perspective, my concern for keeping development within the UDA is of greater import to me, because I feel that over the last 10 years, we have seen quite a bit of our rural land gobbled up during the boom times for development, and it wasn't well planned, which also puts pressure on our school system and our fire and rescue. So to me, those kind of knock each other out to a certain extent. I think our rural nature of our county is going to become more and more important over time, as we become more dependent upon our local produce and our local economies. That's my personal opinion. So those things are leading me to, even though I did support your motion to discuss this, to stick, lean towards sticking with our original decision that we made in December. Because to me, it seems like the only things that we're really discussing at this point are things that we've already discussed after the vote in December. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. McCarthy, as I said, I'm not, I'm going to vote no on this. But my concern is that for those business people who have put out real money, I'm looking away to essentially grandfather vest those people in this. If the board votes to not rescind, sorry, if the board votes to rescind, then those people who are already invested under an existing law are out of their due process. So my reason to table, which did not get a second, okay, was to go and try to find a way so that, not knowing how this board is necessarily going to vote, that they would be protected, they could be grandfathered in, on that. I can name names, or we have a date certain. But my purpose is to try to protect those people that have put in tens of thousands, not hundreds, but tens of thousands of dollars into site development that has not yet gone to the county, but the county knows that they're there, and not just, you know, have it just go out on a four-to-three vote that goes against them. That was the purpose for it. So if you have a suggestion or a way to do that, that's fine. If there's four votes that are going to say no, then so be it. But my concern is, I don't want to leave somebody here hanging. I think that's bad policy, and it's bad due process from a business viewpoint.
Mr. Chairman, if I could address his questions?
Sir?
With regard to due process and the money that's been spent, my personal feeling is that laws are passed, or to create a sense of certainty as to how things will be moving forward as far as setting the rules of the game. If we table this and it goes out further, it may, to your point, protect those who've already invested money, but then it tables considerations of those who are in limbo. What's the outcome going to be? Now, you know, my project's put on hold for, you know, three or four months. That's how long, I don't know how long it would take. But, you know, I'm in favor of us creating certainty. I think the better way to ensure the investment of those who haven't put the money in, especially in light of the fact that really, it seems to me, the only things we're discussing are things we've already discussed back in December, is to vote this up or down, and make a final determination. That's my response to your comment.
Further discussion, anyone?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I want to be sure that this board sends the right messages to our community. When we study something for eight or nine months, and we have a up or down vote, and it passes, people make plans to do things. And I know Mr. Dunn says down here, you know, the guy sitting there waiting to see if that vote goes in that direction. That's business. That doesn't make him a bad person for doing that. But it comes across that way, when you put it in that frame. So these are business people trying to make the right decision. We've told them, build in the UDA. That's where we want you. Stay out of the rural area as much as possible. So they're trying to follow the rules that we have set, and we give them direction, and then at the snap of a finger, we say, oh, we changed their mind. Not only does it send the wrong message to the folks here in our county, it sends a message, the wrong message, to those people who might want to come to our county and build, you know, from outside. And I think we need to, you know, be more reliable than that as board members. When we pass something, I think we need to have considered and looked into it, and live by our decisions. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor.
Just a couple more comments. We also received, within the last week, information from one of the persons who brought this request forward to the DRC. And I've heard repeatedly this evening that this was to increase the density in the UDA, or to help facilitate unused properties. But the letter that we received from the gentleman who brought this issue forward essentially has reduced the number of units because of the change in the ordinance. And so I would say that perhaps it's not an issue of increasing the density in the UDA. It is an issue of presenting a more attractive product that would sell. So I would beg to differ with that analogy. And I still go back to buffer ordinances are there to protect our citizens. Unknowingly, this change will happen, I have personally had this happen, where you have expected an ordinance to provide a certain thing, and it is changed, and there is no public notice. So without someone having this item on their radar, they simply do not know about it. And the only way they're going to know about it is when this unit is sitting in their backyard or front yard. And I attended the Planning Commission meeting this past week, attended the board meeting of residents who live where the current MDP that Mr. Klein presented to us. And the only way they're finding out about this change is that these units will be in their front yard. And it's, I just don't feel that there's, we talk about inclusive rather than exclusive. These people have not been included.
Mr. Chairman, is this public hearing closed?
Yes, sir.
Is it?
Yes, sir.
Am I allowed to speak?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Apologize for my voice. Just some clarifications. So if Ms. Slaughter's motion passes, we will revert to the 2017 December buffer ordinance of 50 feet. That was, okay, that's what we revert to. If it fails, we will keep the current buffers.
That's correct.
And are we considering sending it back for review, or is it just as is done tonight?
Not at any point other than the one you just stated.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Are we ready? Mr. Trump?
No.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Mr. Lofton?
No.
I'm waiting.
This is to rescind, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Lofton was no?
No.
Mr. Wells?
No.
Ms. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
No.
Chair votes no, the motion's defeated. All right. That will bring us to board liaison reports. Are there any? Supervisor Lofton?
Mr. Chairman, as a liaison to the Social Services Board, I was privy to some information. The Medicaid expansion in Virginia, as it stands at this point, will take place January 1. Social Services is gearing up. They will have to hire eight people. And it appears that it will cost the county approximately $240,000 to implement this.
Well, that's great news.
Yes, it is.
Thanks so much. Any other board liaison reports? Anyone?
Mr. Chairman, I had the honor of attending a World War I, World War II event in Stevens City, put on by Mr. Fravel there. He did an excellent job. He does it each year. We had, I think there were 17 to 18 World War II veterans there. It was a great, great time. I had lunch with them, shared, heard a lot of stories. I encourage everyone to take that opportunity next year, if you didn't get a chance this year, and support all of those groups that are there that sponsor the flights to Washington, DC, for the World War II vets to see the memorials. So congratulations to them. It's a great positive thing for our community.
Thank you, sir. Any other liaison reports? Anyone? All right. This is an opportunity for citizens to speak with us on any issue whatsoever, sir, if you would like. It's your opportunity.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, sir. Anyone? Yes, ma'am?
Well, first of all...
Thank you. Sorry.
First of all, I would like to thank you all for voting to send it to the Public Works Committee. And I wanted to address some of Mr. Dunn's concerns. I want you to be aware that both the current board, as well as a former board member, Ethel Nichols, had separately looked into determining the cost for a property management company. And it was determined to be both too costly and just impossibly unaffordable for our Property Owners Association. And secondly, I wanted you to be aware, with regard to the embezzlement complaint, I'm the one that made that complaint. And I made that complaint because I was very upset that we had such a significant increase in our dues. Thirty-three percent, thirty-three and a half percent is a huge increase. And I thought, wait a minute, why is this happening? I had stepped away and had no involvement with the board for many years because of my own personal health issues. And when I got to talk to the new board president, Ms. Grianche, I was told that, you know, they were on the verge of bankruptcy, because there was not enough money at that point to even really continue, and they had to do this increase. And so I thought, wait a minute, where did all of our money go? You know, you guys are having to dip into, I don't remember if it was the emergency reserve study or what it was, but the fund to just continue through the end of last year. And I thought, this can't be right. And so I contacted the police, who sent out Detective Hazel Wood, and I've spoken with him several times. He did initiate an investigation. However, because of those three years of records missing, the current Homeowners Association Board can't provide what he needs to continue. And that investigation has not been closed, the last I spoke with him, but it's tabled until information can be provided. Well, in order to provide that information, they would have to do a complete forensic accounting of multiple years going back. We don't have the money to do that. And it would involve more than just looking at the receivables and the payables. It would look at, was the invoicing even correct? When you look at that fact, and then you take into account that they can only legally go back and collect five years of dues, every year that goes by that past dues are not being collected is another year that falls off the books. So, you know, it's not that the current board hasn't tried their best to figure out a solution. It's just, we're in such bad shape. And the final issue that I wanted to... (noise) Sorry.
Very quickly.
The final issue I just wanted to say is, a lot of people don't really understand how this process works. I personally had a meeting with Mr. Tierney and Mr. Williams. And, you know, at some point, I think it would be beneficial if, in a board meeting, it was discussed, if we ever get to that point, about how the process works with the creation of bonds and things, to fund these sanitary districts. Because a lot of people have no clue that that's what occurs. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any issue at all? Yes, sir.
Good evening, David Williamson, Gainsborough District. I feel like I'm speaking too much tonight. You open the floor for any issues. And so I'd like to bring an issue to your attention. Couple of months ago, I met with the Board of Zoning Appeals in regards to a appeal for a couple of amateur radio towers in the RPR 5 district. And that appeal was denied. At the time, the chairperson of the Board of Zoning Appeals told me that they needed to deny my appeal because I needed to bring it back to the Board of Supervisors, because it was not their job to interpret the county code. It was their job to take Mr. Charon's interpretation of the county code as true and accurate. And so since that time period, I've met with at least two of the supervisors individually to discuss this matter. And I have been recommended to put out a petition to county residents, and I have done so, and I have over 600 signatures, to propose an amendment to the ordinance regarding the use of personal amateur radio, personal broadband, personal television and radio towers in any district other than the RA district, which, based on that Board of Zoning Appeals determination, it was determined by Mr. Charon that the RA district was the only district, in fact, that you were permitted to be able to have any type of a personal use tower-type structure on your property by right. So I come to you now, since you've opened the floor, to ask, what would be for me the next step in that process to propose an amendment ordinance to the board as a whole?
Your next step after the Board of Zoning Appeals would be the Circuit Court.
The Circuit Court?
Not this body.
It was my understanding that I would be here to recommend an amendment to that ordinance.
If you wanted an amendment to the ordinance, I'm not sure how you'd get there. Work with staff on it.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Anyone? Were the supervisors' comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would just state for, you know, any member of the community, if you have an idea for an amended ordinance, that you can go through county staff for the proper procedures on how to apply it to the ordinance committee or to planning and development for those types of changes.
Were the supervisors' comments, are there any? Vice Chairman Lofton?
Mr. Chairman, I move we adjourn.
Motion to adjourn is our second.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. We'll stand adjourned. We thank everyone for their time and attention.